Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. Uh, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Time is six thirty-four, thirty-three. And, um, as a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk over here prior to the item. Um, and those blue forms can be picked up in the back there, right when you came in the door. Okay, at this time, we're gonna do roll call. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush should be marked absent. Mayor Protem Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Lormar.
Here.
Okay, uh, tonight's invocation is going to be presented by Pastor Dennis Morales of Calvary Chapel Eastvale. Not here yet. Okay, well, maybe he will be. We'll do the pledge first then. Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem Rigby, if you would lead us, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, presentations, announcements. Did I skip anything here?
Would you like to?
Sure. Okay, uh, we are gonna have Mayor Protem Rigby step in and do our invocation for us tonight.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are so very grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet together here in this building for the, for the city council meeting this evening. Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to discuss the city needs and to be able to lead and direct this great city. We ask that thou will lead and guide us to make those decisions and to listen to the presentations that are before us, that we may be able to do what is best for our city and for our residents. Father, we are grateful for our residents and for what they do and for their input and for their support. We are also grateful for our staff and for all that they do. We are grateful for our first responders, our law enforcement, and for the great service that they provide to our city and to our country. Father, we ask that thou will bless us all this evening and we ask that we may be safe and ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Good job. You can fill in any time for that. Um, okay, this time we're moving on to presentations and announcements. The council will be adding a presentation item to tonight's agenda, and that's item three point two. Um, and that will be a Neighborhood Watch program update, and, um, so looking forward to that. Item three point one is the introduction of the city's newest police sergeant, Sergeant Brian Gutierrez. Captain Hedge, would you please introduce Sergeant Gutierrez?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce our newest sergeant to the Eastvale team. As you're aware, Sergeant Justin Rowan was recently promoted to lieutenant and transferred to another assignment. Although bittersweet, it just so happens that we had a sergeant that I have worked with for several years in the past at another assignment, and he was recently, probably within the last six months, assigned to me, uh, which I was very happy to, uh, to have him. And so it wasn't very hard for me to look to see who the replacement would be. I believe he will be an excellent fit for the community and an excellent fit to the traffic team. Uh, having said that, I would like to introduce you to the newest member of the Eastvale Police Department. Sergeant Brian Gutierrez is a veteran police officer with nineteen years' law enforcement experience. I began his career with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department in nineteen ninety-nine. Sergeant Gutierrez has worked various assignments, including corrections, patrol operations, a school resource officer, uh, problem-oriented policing, which is like the SETE team, uh, mid-level narcotics enforcement, as well as being assigned to one of the department's detective bureaus. Sergeant Gutierrez has held the ranks of deputy sheriff, corporal, investigator, and his current assignment is sergeant. Sergeant Gutierrez is married and has three children, and I'm happy to introduce you to Sergeant Brian Gutierrez, the newly-assigned traffic sergeant for the city of Eastvale.
I want to say thank you, everybody, um, Mayor, councilmembers. I appreciate your not welcoming here. I appreciate the captain selecting you and I look forward to having a great conversation with you.
Thank you for joining us.
Welcome.
Welcome. Would you mind taking a picture? Alright, let's do a picture, guys.
You're not gonna be in it, just up there.
Alright, okay, um, welcome aboard Sergeant Gutierrez. Uh, moving on to item three point two, uh, we're gonna get an update on the City Neighborhood Watch program, and that's gonna be provided by our very own Dr. Don Pedinger and also our very own city engineer, Joe Ingerwan. Gentlemen.
Good evening, mayor, city council, residents. It's a pleasure. Uh, Neighborhood Watch, we started back in, uh, May of last year, and some of you heard some of the updates, everything that we're doing on it. Our slogan is "Being Part of the Solution," uh, you know, you can be part of the problem, you can be part of the solution, and that's kind of what we have taken as a stance with Neighborhood Watch in the city of Eastvale. Our Neighborhood Watch is the cookie and butter type that you see on the typical programs of other cities where they put a sign, they have a meeting, and they forget it. We really are very methodical about how we do our Neighborhood Watch. We interview our captains, and we like to have two to four captains per zone, uh, zones in the city. We broke our city up into twenty-nine different zones. You know what? I wanna stand over here, and that way I can see the audience also. Uh, and we broke our city into twenty-nine different zones and one business zone. So we have thirty different zones throughout. Uh, what makes our Neighborhood Watch different than the normal ones that you see in other cities is we have quarterly captains meetings. Uh, that's one of the big things. Uh, we're able to bring all of our captains together and give them updates on different things that they need to take back to their communities. We've seen that in prior Neighborhood Watches, that the captains get burned out. Sometimes there's one, or there's two captains, and when someone gets promoted, demoted, or moves or dies, or just gets tired, uh, they stop being the captain of the Neighborhood Watch where actually dies. When you have multiple captains, there's always that next person in line to take it. If you guys are familiar with how geese fly, it's the same way they fly in a formation. The geese at the back honk at the geese at the front, and the goose at the front keeps going. When he gets tired, he goes to the back and he drags on the others and he takes a rest. And that's what we try to do with our Neighborhood Watch program, is we want that goose up front flying, taking the lead, but when he gets tired, drop back in the formation, let someone else take the lead for a while, so that we can keep our Neighborhood Watch rolling. We're also gonna have a community accountability. They're taking accountability for their neighborhoods. They're gonna work the block for it, and it's not just, "Why are the police doing this?" We want them to take accountability by looking, keeping their neighborhoods safe. In addition, we're gonna add a business watch component, as we start creating additional business centers. And our city wants those business managers looking out for their communities also, doing the right thing by our city, installing cameras, having proper communication with our sheriff's department, and being able to do that. And the final thing is, is this is really an overlay. This is something that's gonna continue to grow. As we have our twenty-nine districts throughout the city, we're gonna be able to identify three to four captains in each area. That is gonna be able to be provided to the sheriff's department, as well as our city hall and our fire department. So they're gonna know different people in each community that they can call if they need to get information or something out, really, because they're a missing child for that matter. But once we're done rolling out the Neighborhood Watch zone, then we're gonna be overlaying it with a emergency management type, an instant command. And what that's gonna do is, we're gonna look at trying to get so many people per zone certificed. So if we have a disaster in our city, we open up an instant command. We're able to say, "Hey, you know what? In zone seven, zone five, zone eight, we have twenty-four people that are certificed." We know those neighborhoods are gonna start going. So when the fire department has to deploy resources, they know those areas are being taken care of. And our goal ultimately will be, at least you have one to two people per zone certificed with their backpacks and everything like that, and they can be a component of the Neighborhood Watch meetings that we might have once or twice a year. And we'll continue to update those when we have our quarterly captains meetings. Uh, and if you look at this flyer right here, right next to it, that's a flyer that everybody gets before the meeting. It's not just something we post, something on Facebook. Uh, every neighbor, and they're buying it, they're skin in the game. A flyer is put on every person's door, so they have a full opportunity to know to be there. So, you wanna click this? This is something that's shown every meeting.
Hello, I'm Daniel Hedge, chairman of the local sheriff's department, and we're here to help the police. I live in the present day, so I want to take the opportunity to offer a community through myself and your case department. Our dedicated staff will put forth state partnerships to provide our community with the best services available to safety, community outreach, and education. We strive to provide assistance to citizens, to serve the community, to save. Rural Valley Partnerships is with you, with me. The program is sponsored by the state department of neighborhood watch to work together to aid a crack crime in our city. Remember, if you see something unusual or suspicious, follow the code. For emergency 911, there are no passcode suspicious activities. 911, there is no need to enter the code. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
So those of you that are old enough, I'm gonna ask you, is it real or is it a hoax? You know, that was a game commercial. We have the cap right here. Anyway, that video, along with a video from Lieutenant Martin, is playing at every Neighborhood Watch meeting as we do the rollout with the community. And the reason for that is so they can put a name with the face, and we want to have that personal relationship with our law enforcement. If the neighbors feel comfortable enough that they can call up to the station if they need something or they see something that's not right, there's that communication. Captain Hedge and Lieutenant Martin have done a wonderful job of being that liaison between the community and law enforcement, so that they feel there's some hope to our policy there at all times. And we're seeing it have positive effects within our community. Just recently, uh, one of our neighborhoods that had gone through the Neighborhood Watch program had a motorcycle stolen out of her garage. She did exactly what we teach: don't post things on Facebook first. The best way you can start to help to catch a bad guy is when a crime happens, call 911 if it's a current crime, or if it's an old crime, you call the non-emergency number. She saw her bike get stolen out of the garage, she called 911, and, uh, the police department rolled it out. Then, she was a good witness, she put all the information on the, on the community page. One of the admins saw that and rolled it out in every single page. A few minutes later, some lady posts this picture. "Hey, is this the bike driving by my street with these two people on it?" Heck yeah, it is. And within, I'd say within five or ten minutes, sheriff's department had the picture. They were already, uh, showing it to the school resource officer, and he goes, "Yeah, I know that guy." And the neighbors, "Hey, we know this person." And so before they were even done with their crime, this wonderful thing happened. They were arrested, and, uh, the sheriff's department did a wonderful job to produce. It felt great because they used Facebook and they used their Neighborhood Watch skills to report a suspicious activity. They reported a crime, they gave full descriptions of everything, and the perpetrator was caught pretty quickly. So, we're glad to see those types of things happening. It's gonna help reduce crime. You know, one of the things that we say in Neighborhood Watch meetings, we want to be so diligent as a community that we're pushing these bad guys off the chino in Ontario Ranch. That, "Hey, go commit your crimes over there, you'll have a better chance those neighbors are doing other things." Our neighbors are diligent, and so we're seeing, it's really starting to work. Anyway, by the numbers, how many of you remember Sports Illustrated when it used to come in a magazine form? Any of you? Okay, alright. So, the one thing I always liked to flip into was this section called "By the Numbers," and it was really cool, and it broke it down. So, ten thousand, six hundred and two flyers have been handed out to community members throughout our city announcing a Neighborhood Watch meeting. Two thousand, five hundred and ten members are on individual community Neighborhood Watch pages. And so those are people that have had a rollout already in their community. Next, we have one thousand, twenty-nine people attend Neighborhood Watch meetings since Mar- or, uh, May, excuse me. That's, that's pretty amazing. We've had Neighborhood Watch meetings when it was a hundred and sixteen degrees, and we were swept like big dogs, and we had Neighborhood Watch meetings last night when we took a canoe and hit it in the middle of the rain. So, it's great. We had a great turnout during the rain, and we had a marvelous turnout during the hundred and sixteen degrees. Here's another one that you guys might like. One hundred and thirty-six pizzas have been provided at Neighborhood Watch meetings. So, we always provide pizza. That seems to be a great conduit to get residents to come and offer free food. I even got the mayor out there.
That's correct.
Anyway, uh, then we've had one hundred and eighteen people on average per neighborhood page. Uh, we have seventy-eight captains so far. That's people who have stepped up, said that they'll take the role of managing their, their social media page for their neighborhood, they'll coordinate and hand you out the flyers for their neighborhood, and they'll also continue to attend captains' meetings to give additional information and keep that neighborhood relevant. Uh, the next thing we have is sixty. That's the percent of the neighborhoods that are completed within the city of Eastvale. So we've completed sixty percent of the city, has a very active, very involved Neighborhood Watch. And those sixty, that sixty percent of those neighbors are also purchasing signs for their neighborhood that says Neighborhood Watch in progress. Now, we know a sign alone's not gonna stop somebody, a bad guy, from coming in, but when they start to see people posting things, calling the sheriff's department, sheriff's department coming out, those things happen. And we really need to put a great bit of thanks to the city that stepped up to install that one sign, and if the community buys it, they'll install the sign at the entrance and exit points of our neighborhoods. So that's a great thing. Next, twenty-nine neighborhoods and zones, which I told you are within the city. We've had seventeen Neighborhood Watch meetings so far completed, and we have five zones that still need captains. So if you live in one of our zones and we don't have a captain, we're soliciting for you right now. You can go through an interview, and we'd love to have you. We have four Neighborhood Watch meetings on the schedule. We have one tomorrow night, so if you live in the Harada area, we'll be going there. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the Harada, the Harada French. So, Harada French tomorrow night. And then, we have three Neighborhood Watch meetings currently being scheduled. And the last one, we were at the Five Ten K Run. We had a booth there, soliciting Neighborhood Watch, sharing information. It paid off. We got two captains out of it, and we scheduled tonight. So, that's Neighborhood Watch by the numbers. Finally, if you take a look at this map, the blue indicates where Neighborhood Watch meetings have already taken place, and we have active Neighborhood Watches. If you look at the green, those are the four areas. Meetings are scheduled, flyers have been printed, and, uh, we hand them out the weekend before the Neighborhood Watch meeting to every resident within that zone. The yellow means captains have been identified, and we're just waiting to put them on the calendar for a date. Uh, it'll say, "Give us their location." And the red, those prime five little red zones, those are areas that we need captains. And right here, that wasn't, uh, indicated, that is zone thirty. That's gonna be our business zone. So that's headed, look at this as the city, as Jack Webb would say, and that's, that's our city. And if you see, we're pretty fortified all around. We just have a little bank, and they're safe. Everybody around them is watching. So, I think that was their plan all along. But, uh, anyway, they're stepping up. We've got those three green zones. That'll be filled in, and then another, and that whole checkerboard will be blocked in. So we're pretty happy with that. And that's Neighborhood Watch. We're, uh, Brandon Plot and Todd Rippey. They have a big round of applause. Uh, the three of them have worked very diligently, and, uh, it's been a passionate love to do this, and we should be done probably by April with the entire city, and then we'll be moving on to stage two. Uh, mayor or council, any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment, though, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Don, for this. Thank you for your support, for all that you've done with this. And then also, I'd like to, to thank the sheriff's department for your support and, and helping us to roll this out. Um, this is, as Don mentioned, we've already seen results, so thank you for your support in all this.
Well, I have a comment as well. Uh, Don, just to correct on your stats, it's actually a hundred and thirty-six. Just in case anyone's wondering, it's large pizzas. Just throwing that out there.
Very large.
No, thank, thank you so much for all your help. I know it's been, uh, you know, something that we've been wanting to do from the get-go, and, and, uh, I, I personally thought this would take, you know, when we first talked, about two years, when we first started getting this thing ground, two years at least to get it just completed. And, uh, that was definitely wrong. It's, it's gonna be less than a year to get this thing actually rolled out, and then from that point to implement. So thank you again for your help, for the, or, second highest, Captain Hedge. Thank you for just getting on board and supporting and just being all about it, utilizing your resources as well, and, and city staff, Joe, has always been a huge help. So, thank you guys. And then, Don especially, you've dedicated an immense amount of time. This can't be, nothing can hap- this cannot happen without you and all your help.
So, Joe has also put together a better map.
Yes, correct.
He's positioned it to give you a throw up there on the screen, that is really light years ahead. That'll be coming down the road, so that's what his map looks like, and that'll be rolled out here within a month or so. Joe, thank you for doing that. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Pedinger.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Pedinger. That, uh, oh, a big, my, my hats off to you, to the council members on either side of me, uh, Mayor Protem Rigby and Brandon Plot, uh, council member. Um, the, the work that you guys have been doing has been huge. Um, attending that meeting last night was, uh, it was great to see citizens taking control of, uh, being part of the solution, I should say. Um, so, and to see that grassroots coming together is awesome. So, thank, thank you for your diligent work on this. Um, and thank you for the presentation, and Joe, thank you for the detailed map. That's cool. Alright, so, uh, that completes items three. Uh, moving on to item four, that's the student liaison report, the report from Oscar Zuniga.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, citizens. Rosa Parks, Harada, Ronald Reagan, Clara Barton, and Eastvale Elementary all welcomed back their students on Monday, January eighth, from their winter break. All Eastvale local schools will not have school on Monday, January fifteenth in celebration of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Rosa Parks will be gate testing from tracks, for track C on January sixteenth, and will also have their box top contest for tracks A and D on January twenty-ninth. Ronald Reagan Elementary will be having sibling registrations for the school year of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen on January twenty-second. January twenty-fourth, students from tracks A will be all receiving awards for their academic efforts. The Ronald Reagan Father Daughter Dance will be hosted on January twenty-ninth. Student twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen registration day will be on February twentieth. The next day following, the twenty-first, tracks B, C, and T will also be receiving awards for their academics. River Heights Intermediate, Augustine Ramirez Intermediate, and Eleanor Roosevelt High School are all currently on winter break until Tuesday, January sixteenth. Although River Heights is still planning for their annual science engineering expo on January twenty-second. Sadly, we have recently lost an amazing educator at Eleanor Roosevelt. Um, in respect for the loss of one of our local high school teachers, Ms. Rachel Black, and her husband, whom passed away recently, I would like to encourage the community to join Eleanor Roosevelt High School this Friday, January twelfth, for a candlelight vigil at six P.M. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Um, any questions for Oscar?
Oscar, is it, I think I noticed that was at four-thirty. Is it six o'clock?
Um, I received six, but, um, I could get back to you in... Oh, it concludes at six. I'm sorry about that. So it is four-thirty.
Okay, and, uh...
Four to six-thirty.
And I don't know if you have an answer for this, or maybe staff does. Do we know about candles for the candlelight vigil? Is that something that people should bring on their own? Will they be provided? Candles.
Mayor Lormar, we can certainly check with the school district. They are taking the lead in organizing this, uh, Eleanor Roosevelt High School. So we will coordinate with them and see if there's any assistance we can provide them.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, there, there was a similar candlelight vigil a while back, and there was a distinct lack of candles, so I would, without even knowing at this point, if you were able, if you're planning on attending, try and bring your own candle. Might be, go a long way. Alright, um, moving on to public comments. Any members of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request that comments made on the agenda be made at the time that the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Uh, Mr. Aguilar, have we received any, uh, public comment cards?
Yes, we received two public comment cards, the first being from Justin Duell.
Excellent. Mr. Duell.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lormar and council. Uh, if you'd be here tonight, Justin Duell, Assembly Member Serbontas's office, just wanted to provide a brief legislative update. Um, the legislature went back into session for twenty eighteen last Wednesday. Uh, Assembly Member Serbontas will continue to carry some of the bills which she introduced last year that are still in the senate. Um, that includes AB one sixty-two. Um, this bill would expand, um, the number of small businesses that are eligible for the California Competes Tax Credit. Uh, AB ninety-one, which would allow any driver to use carpool lanes during off-peak hours. Um, that's on the senate floor. The previous one was in the senate Governance and Finance Committee. AB one ninety-three, which would, um, allow consumers a rebate on, uh, the purchase of used high-efficiency vehicles. That bill is also on the senate floor. And then additionally, Assembly Member Serbontas, um, is introducing, uh, new legislation this session. Um, those new bills include AB seventeen forty-six. Now, this bill will, um, make it easier to prosecute certain sex crimes that occur across jurisdictions. Um, and also AB seventeen eighty-six, which will create an articulation platform so that California community colleges can, um, transfer credits for military service for their veteran students. Um, so those are a couple of the bills she introduced this session. Uh, only other announcement, uh, our office is, um, hosting a backpack drive next Saturday, the twentieth, with Eastvale Girl Scouts, Troop Six Six Two. Um, so that's gonna be at Harada Park, ten a.m. to two P.M. You can bring your backpacks, school supplies, and then Troop will donate the, um, the backpacks to, um, children and families in need. Um, so that's the next step, and that's all. Thank you very much for your beautiful time.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar.
Our second public comment card was from Ray Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, council members, and, uh, mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There, uh, could, uh, glory, war, and, uh, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Uh, I'm back, uh, beginning of the year to update on mailbox crime, uh, subject, and I just wanna update you on what happened last year, what did happen, so that I may. Uh, last year, I started out looking for new ways to generate activism, build awareness, and momentum for more discussions to improve public communication and combat mailbox crimes. I felt there was a lack of communication to the residents to be helpful, and I felt we needed to do better, uh, to improve that. So, I reached out to the city council last year on a proactive citizens' reward program. The then, then mayor, Joe Tesari, pledged one hundred dollars. I backed it up to another hundred dollars, and we had two hundred dollars to start this program. Unfortunately, it died because of a second, um, uh, motion on the fourth. I then reached out to the Eastvale Chamber of Commerce president on the same subject, only to be ignored after multiple emails. I did receive a call from him. In my view, it was a missed PR marketing opportunity, supporting Eastvale residents to help combat, uh, crimes, mailbox crimes. I then reached out to Eastvale Safety Commissioner, asking for a plan and support, only to be ignored, and then they have their own agenda on this subject. I then reached out to the United States Postal, uh, Inspection Service, uh, on a public reward mill, uh, program to discourage mailbox crimes. And they were very receptive. They listened to what I had to say, but after many hours, with the U.S. E.I., it became apparent that a realistic reward program could not be easily implemented. with the U. S. E. I., it became apparent that a realistic reward program could not be easily implemented. At least you're willing to take the time to listen. One huge improvement last year was by the United States Postal Office, was the Inform Delivery Service. A new free app to combat mailbox crime, should you become a victim, you will know what mail is taken. It allows people to receive email notifications each morning, showing images of their expected mail that day. I also, uh, reached out to the local newspapers on mailbox crimes. Eastville News came through with a comprehensive, definitive review on mailbox crimes and how to better protect ourselves, with credit due from the help of our Eastville Sage app providing the data, thank you. And, uh, I'll end it very quickly, I want to give huge credit and kudos to Councilman Brad DePlot and Todd Reddick, and Resident Don Pennington, delivering a comprehensive, effective watch and combat all crime. Thank you, gentlemen, you've helped make Eastville better. It's been said many times, wrong was not the only day, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Okay, that, does that conclude our...
That concludes public comments.
Okay, um, at this time, we're gonna move on to the consent calendars, items six point one through six point ten. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine, and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests that separate action, uh, on a specific item. Mr. Aguilar, have any members of the staff or members of the public requested to pull any item?
There have been no requests.
Okay, council?
Yeah, I do have one question, I don't, and maybe I need some direction from our city attorney. And I don't know if it needs to be done here, the city council mentor, if it just needs to be done, uh, during city council comments. There is an item that we voted on last council, and I feel that needs further discussion, I voted, would that be something that we would, uh, discuss at council comments or on this?
Uh, it would be, my understanding, later.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but for the consent calendar, are there any items that any council member would like to pull?
Move approval.
Second, okay, we have a first and we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush should be marked absent, councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Lamar?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, that concludes the consent calendar, we are moving on to public hearings, except we don't have any public hearings tonight. So, taking us to item eight, uh, city council business, and those are items eight point one through eight point three. And, let me see here, eight point one, and that is to, it's listed on the agenda to rescind temporary suspension of drought enforcement regulations. However, on the presentation, it's titled reinstating landscaping requirements suspended during the recent drought. Okay, so, with that, Mr. Eric Norris?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize for the convoluted titles here, I'll try and make it a little more clear as we go through.
Thank you.
So, to, to do this, I'm not gonna go back to the seventies like Mr. Pettinger, but let's go back to twenty fourteen, and talk about the drought. So, we all remember those, those dry days back then, when everybody was asked to conserve water. One of the things that happened in twenty fourteen was the governor implemented an executive order, which, in part, directed agencies throughout the state to implement programs to save water, to conserve water during the drought. And we've highlighted their save water, that was the, one of the main purposes of doing that. So, we did a number of things here, here in Eastville, to do the city's share of, uh, statewide of saving water. We adopted new regulations that were, that affect how you design new landscaped areas, so that they use less water over time. And a number of our homeowners responded in several different ways, uh, doing what everyone was saying, you know, brown is the new green, was the whole watchword then. So, we had some folks who let their lawns go brown, uh, and in various ways, some of them kept them nicely mowed, but brown, or mostly brown. And some people replaced their grass with water-conserving materials. So, you'll, if you drive around town, you'll see yards that now have mostly bark, or mostly mulch in them. Again, it's all stuff that saves water and things that we're telling people to do. So, um, some of these pictures are in Eastville, some of them aren't, I won't point out which ones, but this is an example of someone who has taken their lawn and made it drought tolerant. This is a, another lawn where someone has taken a more economical approach, I guess if you want to put it that way, and they have, uh, simply stopped watering the lawn. So, it's nicely kept, the leaves are raked up, but there's, there's no lawn there. So, that's all good, but what happened in response to, in particular, if, lawns like this, was people began pointing out to us that we have a section in our, in our zoning code, in the neighborhood preservation chapter, that says that everyone's, that all visible yards, so that's your front yard and your side yard, if you can see that, have to be landscaped and maintained in an aesthetically consistent manner. So, what that means is, if everybody else on the street has a lush, green lawn, and you're the one person with the brown lawn, you're out of compliance with this. And our code enforcement officers were then being forced to go out and go not only to folks like this, but to folks like this, because we would get complaints about these lawns as well, and tell them that they needed to look like everybody else on the street. So, that now brings us up to May of twenty fifteen. We brought this to the council's attention, and the council said, well, during the drought, let's stop enforcing the aesthetically consistent piece of our code. We're not gonna go after the people who are responding to the drought with either the, the mulch or the brown lawns. So, twenty seventeen, the drought is now over, the governor rescinds his original order, so we're not under that requirement anymore. And one of the things that he did was he rescind, as part of this overall new executive order declaring the drought over, he rescinded the original one. So, that brings us to tonight, and with all that history, we're looking to the council to tell us what we should do with this. So, there are, actually, this is, okay, there are several different things that you could do. I mean, the, the simple thing is, the simple and most straightforward, I guess, would be to just start enforcing that provision of the zoning code again. The provision in the code never went away, it always sat there, we just didn't enforce it for the last couple of years. So, one option would be to simply start enforcing it right away. Second would be to postpone enforcement until further notice. Let's just leave it there and maybe put a time limit on it, give people a chance to start watering their lawns again, whatever. The other would be to, uh, well, to, as I said here in the third bullet, to allow people to bring their lawns into compliance. Now, the other thing that's going on is that, uh, planning has been working for a while, and we plan to continue with our, our new, uh, city attorney when they're on board, with an update to the whole neighborhood preservation chapter of the code. There are a few things in there that just, uh, we think need to get fixed, uh, just to make it consistent with other parts of our municipal code and so on. And the aesthetically consistent piece is one of those. So, the other thing we could do is to direct staff to focus on that first bullet item there, just that aesthetically consistent piece. We can get that done without getting into the whole, uh, comprehensive update to the neighborhood preservation section, and replace that with a more, a, a standard that's, I guess, more accepting of difference, that requires lawns to be well-maintained, but doesn't require everyone on the street to have the same kind of lawn. With that in place, we could go after the unkempt lawns, but we wouldn't, the folks who maybe don't like that mulch in the lawn next to them that is well-maintained, but doesn't look like theirs, would not give them the, the ability to come and use our own code against their neighbor in that situation, which is what we're afraid of if we start enforcing that again immediately. Uh, 'cause I know from talking to code enforcement that there are people who have lodged those kind of complaints, and have been told, we're not enforcing that right now, and their next question is, well, when are you gonna start enforcing it? 'Cause I'm gonna be here the day you do and complain about my neighbor again. So, kind of a lot to bite off, but that's sort of where we are. We're looking for some direction, do you want us to start immediately, uh, wait a while, or just have us start on updating that one piece of the aesthetically consistent thing? Bring that back to you, we need to go to, to the planning commission and then back here. So, a slight delay, but we could bring that back to you as, you know, as quickly as humanly possible.
Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Aguilar, do we have any public comments on this?
We've received none.
Does anybody wanna talk about this? Okay, council?
Joe? I, I agree with revising the, uh, current code with the aesthetically consistent, uh, element. And in the meantime, until it is brought back, we can out, put out the notices that we're going to begin enforcement, and that way the public is aware, so that they can start addressing their unwatered yards, maybe getting them back in order before we start enforcing.
I agree. Mr. Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple, uh, questions and comments, so, the way that our ordinance is written right now, does that mean that everyone has to have, if, if majority of the people on the street have green grass in their front yard, does that mean everyone has to have that green grass?
Has to be aesthetically consistent, yeah, and that's where it gets fun. If you're on a cul-de-sac with ten homes, and nine of the people get together on, over the weekend and decide, we're all gonna take our lawn out and put mulch in, the guy with the grass is now in, is now in violation, because he's not consistent with the neighborhood.
So, for instance, if someone has, um, your, all your neighbors have green grass, and all of a sudden you've decided to go drought tolerant, now you're not in compliance?
Exactly.
I don't agree with that. Plain and simple, I, I don't think that that's fair, I don't think that that's right, I think that needs to be changed, I would like to see us revisit that, um, so that it's well-manicured yards and not aesthetically consistent, because you have a lot of yards that I think, and, and I think, there's other people that would agree with me on this, that you can have a yard, um, that is very well-maintained, that looks better than some grass yards. So, I think it, the verbiage needs to be changed in that. The other question I have is, is I know that when the governor released the, um, whatever we call it, the, the ban...
Executive order, yeah.
Executive order, I know that J. C. S. D. retained part of that. Do you know, have they fully released that? To allow watering restrictions, 'cause I know that even with the water that we received last winter, that they still held on to the watering restriction. So, I'd hate for us to say, hey, you need to have your yards green and, and, and great, um, condition, but yet J. C. S. D. is still holding on to that.
You know, we're gonna work with J. C. S. D. when we develop these new regulations, so we'll talk with them about that. They're real, they're related but separate. J. C. S. D. wants you to limit your watering, so, we still retained our regulations that define how you need to, to design irrigation systems, so they use less water. So, it's really kind of a balancing act between not using more water than J. C. S. D. wants you to, versus keeping the lawn green. That's why over time, you'll probably see smaller lawns, there, you know, smaller lawns with more mulch areas that don't use as much water. But we'll, we'll definitely talk, talk with them as we develop this.
So, my, my overall thought on this is, is I would, I would not, I don't want us to move forward with this right now. I think we need to revisit the language in this, um, as well as I think we need to not enforce this right away, because to have something that has been so long not enforced, and all of a sudden to enforce it tomorrow is very difficult for people. You're talking about things that take a little while to grow. So, I think if we are going to enforce any part of this, that we need to look at a timeline of setting a date in the future to enforce this, so that we can give people the, the right opportunity to be able to, if they want to plant grass, if they want to, um, redo their yard, that I don't think that it's fair to them that we immediately say, hey, Friday, we're gonna enforce this, we're only giving you two days to get your grass to grow, especially on that house, I know that house was in Eastville, uh, the one with the dirt. So, I think two days, no matter what it is, I think we need to give them a realistic timeline of, um, however long it takes to get in compliance.
Counselor Rigby, I think it, it's on the wall, it says spring two thousand eighteen, so does that mean just, whatever the first day of spring is, that's when we enforce it? Is that the...
Yeah, between getting on a ca- on a commission agenda and getting back here, let's say, three months, so for January now, so, February, March, end of April, we can have something left here.
So, we have, in essence, to kind of better answer Councilman Rigby's question, we have time to enforce it, if we do decide it, that's what the direction, if we are going to prove it, there is time to enforce that, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. But do we want to, do we want to enforce that right now? I mean, aesthetically, okay? So, I, I, from the presentation, from the comments, what is your understanding? Is it that you're going to work, please explain your understanding?
As I understand it, what I've heard the council say is you'd like us to tackle that one piece, the aesthetically consistent, replace that with a different standard of just well-maintained, and we'll define what that means. Bring that back to you as quickly as possible, and in the meantime, we'll continue not enforcing that piece of the code.
Okay, and you will also speak with J. C. S. D.?
And we'll definitely sit down with J. C. S. D. as we develop those, the new language.
Did I miss it, did he get everything, guys?
Yeah, just doing the public service, you know, the, uh, information out there, that it is coming down the pipe.
Yeah, we'll work with Olivia and Aleah to get, get notice out, so people know when it's gonna come up at the planning commission and have an opportunity to comment on that. 'Cause it, it is a, a very important issue here, the maintenance, the appearance of our neighborhoods is very important, we're just gonna come up with a different way of defining that, that doesn't result in the kind of paradox that we just talked about.
One question that I had also, and it doesn't have to be an answer now, unless you know it off the top of your head, what was coming back into my mind with that one picture that you showed, and I understand that that's probably out of the norm, but, um, property values of surrounding properties, uh, being impacted by a, a property that does that, is it affected? And should that be part of the consideration as we move forward?
I, I don't know, I'm not sure I can answer that question.
If, if you could look into it, when you come back to us in the future, we'd appreciate it.
We'll look into that, okay.
Mayor Lamar, according to H. D. L. property tax data, um, collectively, Eastville's property values have gone up, uh, year over year for the last several years. So, we are the second highest median house, uh, valuation in the entire county, behind, uh, um...
Indian Wells.
Rancho Mirage, I believe, or Indian, yeah, La Quinta, and some Indian Wells.
Somewhere in the middle, nowhere.
So, I don't, I don't know that this is having a significant impact in the, the totality of Eastville. It may have, uh, more, uh, direct impact when you're running comps as a real estate agent for the immediate neighborhood.
So, can we get a Ritz-Carlton like they have?
That was a nice, that was a very nice hotel.
So, ki- kind of to piggyback off that to answer your question a little bit more, um, speaking professionally, people are not as concerned about, um, if it's a well-maintained yard, that's more important rather than versus grass or, um, uh, drought tolerant plants, more people are starting to go towards drought tolerant. So, I mean, that's what's gonna affect the value is if it's not well-maintained, it's not necessarily if it's, um, grass or not grass. It's just, that, and that's why I think that as we, as long as we keep it so it's well-maintained, we're gonna see that affect property values.
You don't wanna, you wanna keep, you wanna kind of oust anybody out, you know, if they don't have it, but then it's well-maintained.
Exactly, yeah, but thank you for putting this together, I know it was a lengthy presentation, thank you.
Councilmembers, I think if, if we could, um, include some, some data for you from code enforcement, because we are getting, this is, this is directly coming up from code enforcement, and we're, we are seeing folks, um, complain, it's not just about my neighbor's, my neighbor's front yard is dirt, it is my, I have grass, they have mulch, this isn't right. Or, I have grass, and I spend all this money keeping up my grass, my neighbor went and put in a bunch of rock scape and more concrete. So, we, we, this is a much, if you start peeling back the onion, this is a much more complicated issue than just this grass, this yard ha- is green and aesthetically pleasing, and, um, someone else has taken a more, um, drought tolerant approach. So, there's, it's gonna be a little bit of a complicated item to unravel. But I, I think we'll address it sufficiently at this time, notifying all of... But I, I think we'll address it sufficiently at this time, notifying all of the parties that have complaints in the queue. And there are several, probably about a hundred code enforcement complaints right now that are in the queue related to this item.
That reminds me of a question that I did have. Do we have anything that regulates the amount of concrete that you can have in your front yard?
Yes, um, well, Eric, I think can address this. There is a percentage of your, I'll, I'll let Eric touch it, grab it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna let myself get pinned down on the numbers, but yeah, there, there are limits. There's limits on, uh, obviously you can have a driveway, then, then there's a limit on how much additional space you can pave to park cars on. One thing that's not well-defined is when you get into some things that look like paving that aren't paving. Like if you took rock cobble and put that down and maybe grouted that, you know, which you've seen, that's not well, that's a, a separate issue, you know, as Michelle said, that's one of those pieces of the onion as you get further into the neighborhood preservation that we're gonna work on. So, our hope is to kind of focus on this piece first, but that's a very good question and that's something that we've talked about a lot as a planning staff, is how do we start addressing some of the, you know, these issues and questions that we have.
Okay, thank you all. Uh, Ms. Bryant, um, do we, we seem to have consensus here. Do we need to have a motion on this?
It appears that you do not want to change the process of, um,
Correct. Directions enough at this time with the consensus? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to item eight point two, this is the California Violent Intervention and Prevention, or CALVIP, grant. Ms. N- Mrs. Nissen, sorry, I have a cold as well. Mrs. Nissen, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorimer. And, Councilmembers, please excuse my voice. I'm gonna try to speak as loud as I can, but I'm kind of getting over the cold. So, this item bought before you this evening is for the California Violence Intervention and Prevention, CALVIP, grant. Uh, the Corona Norco Unified School District approached the city of Eastville asking if the city would consider partnering on the CALVIP grant application to add an additional school resource officer at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Just to give you a little bit of background on the grant, um, this is funded through Assembly Bill ninety-seven. And what we would be seeking to do is to apply for a roughly $250,000 grant that would allow, um, community-based organizations and the city and the school district to partner together to, um, provide additional school resource officers at the school. Cities are awarded funds and they must be passed through approximately, approximately fifty percent of the funding to a community-based organization. And any city that receives funding must convene an advisory council to help make spending decisions. So, there are some checks and balances in this grant application. The city would take the lead as the applicant. Uh, the school district has a grant writer who have, and they have offered the grant writer's assistance in completing this. There is a local match. So, when you break down the grant application of $250,000 and the, uh, funding for a school resource officer versus the dollar amount of $125,000 that needs to go to a community-based organization, uh, the, uh, cash or in-kind match, excuse me, that is required from the city of Eastville is approximately $50,000. Uh, and then $50,000 from the school district. Eleanor Roosevelt High School is the only high school in the city of Eastville, and we have approximately 4,300 students. We have one school resource officer. And we have one roving school resource officer that is shared between, um, our intermediate schools and Eleanor Roosevelt. So, we have one dedicated S R O. Eleanor Roosevelt High School also has the highest concentration of foster youth in the entire district. And our school district has roughly 53,000 students. We're the ninth largest school district in the, well, Corona Norco Unified School District is the ninth largest school district in the state. Many of the foster youth in our community are, are considered at risk. And they may benefit from a school resource officer that can provide additional intervention programs as well as the collaboration with a community-based organization that would provide additional tutoring, mental health assistance, employment, job training, community police relations, uh, drug diversion, after-school education, resources. Excuse me, as well as, um, uh, street outreach and intervention, house checks. These are some of the options, to name a few, that would be proposed between the C D O and the school resource officer. Excuse me. Um, the grant funds, as we, I mentioned, would not, uh, cover the entire cost of an additional S R O at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and that's why there is a $50,000 additional funding that is requested from the city of Eastville. The added law enforcement presence at Roosevelt will positively impact the entire school campus. The objective is, of a school resource officer is, is to provide the, um, to protect the students and faculty and staff that are on the campus. That's their main objective. It's, it's, uh, it's to provide the functions and criteria, they would have to follow the functions and criteria outlined in the grant. And, um, these, these interventions with our at-school, at-risk youth do, there is a nexus between what then happens in our community once the students leave the campus. So, we're hoping to kind of shift the, the mindset to work with the school district and the sheriff's department to impact or make a positive impact on our youth and, and change, hopefully, their future trajectory from being an at-risk to contributing member of society. More contributing member. The increased police presence at the campus translates into increased police presence in the field and around the school and ultimately provides a safer community due to focused deterrence and intervention programs. I would like to just make sure that the council understands a few things about a school resource officer. It's, it's to cover the school calendar, the school's schedule, so that's roughly 180 days. What we are proposing is, with the school district, of course, is to take the roving officer and make that a, a, a full-time position, not to, it would exceed the 180 days. And, um, that does not include, this doesn't include mileage, which is approximately $5,000. So, there, there's some additional expenses, but we will, we can sort this all out with the school district and bring additional details back to you. There is a timeline on this grant. The application does need to be submitted, um, let's see, by January twenty-second. So, what we're asking for at this time is just some direction from council as to whether or not you would like us to pursue this grant with, this grant application with the school district. That does not necessarily mean that we will be successful, or as we move further down this path, if there are, items in the grant that, that the council cannot agree to, we are also still in a position to, uh, decline the funds if we are awarded or to withdraw our application. But we don't want to miss this opportunity, and part of the grant application is a resolution from the council that you support this, this idea in this, this grant application. I don't want to go into too many, uh, more details. I want to give you an opportunity to ask some questions. We do have, uh, Bill Newberry from the school district here. He's our school board member. And we have Sam Benesuelos, I'm, we're the gentlemen. There we are. So, if you have any specific questions for Bill or Grant, they're, excuse me, Bill or Sam, they're here to answer questions as well as myself.
Excellent. Thank, thank you very much. Before we get to that, Mr. Aguilar, any public comments on this?
We have received none.
Anybody? Okay. Yes, Mr. Tessari?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned a hundred, it's not 180 days. That, so is it a twelve-month position that that, that would be funding?
What, what we are looking to do is, uh, based on recent conversations with the school district, is to fund a twelve-month position. Correct, Bill? And Sam, if you could, if you would join us? Yes, current, currently an S R O is not a twelve-month position. It's 180 school days.
Yeah, so this would be a twelve-month position. And obviously, the school's not in session twelve straight months, so what happens to the deputy on the off time?
Well, this is where the specifications of the grant are very critical. In our experience, uh, when we apply for grants, you, you have to follow the guidelines. Much like the, um, the D U I checkpoint grants or our emergency management grants, you have to follow the, um, functions and criteria outlined in the grant. And as you turn in things for, for reimbursement or, um, certain benchmarks that you have to deliver during the grant process, and there is als- always the opportunity for them to audit. And if you're doing something that is outside of the scope of the details of the grant, then the applicant has to repay all the monies. So, we, this, this S R O would still need to be doing, um, outreach in the community to the foster youth. They'd be doing, um, house checks, um, uh, police relations, street outreach and intervention.
Yep, I was gonna bring that up, basically. So, there's certain minimum requirements that are, that need to be maintained in order to continue to receive the grant funding.
Correct, correct. So, it's not, it's not like this person would, you know, take off their S R O hat and then become a motor officer on those three months.
Right, but during-
They're not apples to apples.
But during the time when school is not in session, there would be a, a benefit to the city with that position? Would they be able to go out and assist patrol doing things in addition to doing these checks?
That's a, that is not what the function of the, the grant application is. It's not for, um, this isn't for enforcement. This isn't for traffic stops. This isn't for patrol. This is related to, um, really reducing crime with our youth. And that, that really needs to be the focus.
I have a question just to piggyback off that, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Can that function, and I don't know, i- it may be something that we may not have the answer for. It may be up to the grant writer, but can that function be, if they're doing house checks, if they have a map of the location of these at-risk youth, can they be patrolling that area? Because that can be, I mean, you're enforcing that area. The other area that, that comes to mind when I look at this is, is what about if they are to help with assisting, um, I, I know it has to do, not specifically with the city's budget, but more of J C S D, but again, that's still helping the city. At the parks, who's at those parks? The majority of those kids are there, the at-risk kids. So, I, I know it's not specifically patrolling or maybe in our commercial area, but still can that officer during those two months in the summer, can they patrol around these at-risk youth homes? As well as at the parks? In, in my opinion, I think that's beneficial to the city. I mean, to have, you have these at-risk kids that now know that I'm not only being checked on at school, but now I'm being checked on at home also, um, I think.
I think, um, we have Captain Hedge and Lieutenant Martin here as well to answer questions that may be more appropriately answered by them. Excuse me.
Thank you. I, I would say that, uh, the, as an example, you had mentioned the patrolling around at-risk youth residences. I think it would be a case-by-case basis on something similar to that. Obviously, we have one that lives in a neighborhood, and we go do a residence check, and that individual's inside the residence, and we talk to them. We're probably not gonna be patrolling around that neighborhood because of that. However, if we have a congregation of those type of youth in a specific neighborhood, and we don't know where they're at, and we suspect maybe they're graffitiing or doing some type of illegal activity, I would, I would expect that it would be appropriate. And I would think that we, we would probably be able to drive through the parks if we have issues with congregating youth that fall within the criteria of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have one question. Then I, if that's the case in the off-hours, meaning the non, the school's not in session, what would they be doing? I mean, there's no way they could fill their day, which is that. I mean, so what would they do in the extra hours they would be having?
Yeah, I, I think that would be outlined in, in the actual preparation of the grant. The school district may have a little bit more, but I know that there's, uh, probably an educational focus on it also in regards to providing education as well as house checks and working probably with the probation department.
Yeah, by all means, please. Yeah. School district is here. Let's take advantage of this great opportunity. Please, share.
I think it might be dead, because I see it in red, so.
I think red.
Yeah.
Uh, what, if you don't mind, I, I know you can speak loudly, but we do record these for people that can't attend. Yeah, if you, you can, you'll be attached, but if you can speak into the microphone, be appreciated. Yeah. Don't let that podium hold you back. Come closer, come on.
I, I'm, I'm not.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Lorimer. So, um, from our end, the questions that have been raised are, are valid, obviously. So, we, um, just like it was mentioned by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Rigby, we are, um, as a district, we, we, we hope we get the support from, from the city. I know, I, we have the support from the city. We have a wonderful relationship, all that. We, we want to continue to be proactive for the same reasons that have been said, so I'm, I'm not gonna go over that. But what, what's, we do know is that during those three months that the kids, we do have a summer school. And at the summer school, we have a, our regular S R O that would cover that. It's a limited summer school. We run it for four weeks. And, but the kids are out, are out for, for, basically, a lot, most of them are out for three months. So, dur- during those months, uh, we would turn it over to, to the city. The, the, that officer would turn over those three months or so to the city to, to do what you will. Obviously, we do need to follow the, the, uh, the grant. Uh, and, and speaking to our grant writer that we've worked with, uh, with, uh, before, with the city of Corona, uh, she seems to think that there is some flexibility. I'm thinking some of the concerns that have been raised, we can probably write them in the grant because as, 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 uh, our city manager mentioned, um, there's, there's no guarantees that we're gonna get it. But I think we can be very clear in the grant as to what we intend to do with the officer, should we, should we get the officer, especially during those three months. I'm not sure if I addressed, as far as the, what can they do? There's a whole list. There's about twenty different things that the grant covers. Some of them have already been mentioned. And, um, there, it's, it's, it's pretty broad, but obviously it's working with youth.
One other piece to this is, one of the pieces that cities don't typically get information on is group homes. And, uh, part of the process of, um, this grant is the grant writer will identify through the grant a group home locations through state licenses that are located within the city of Eastville. That will also become part of that process. So, not only homeless kids, uh, foster youth, uh, but group home children as well. And group home children, hard to identify, um, be- because of the fact that there is, there's no, uh, foster care system that's taking care of them. And the other piece is that this works with the probation department for youth that are on probation as well, that are living within the city of Eastville. So, it's dealing with kids that are on probation, uh, kids that are living in group homes, uh, foster youth, and all of those, uh, types of categories. The homeless youth, just so you kind of have an understanding, because you probably say, "Well, I haven't seen any homeless kids sleeping on the street or in a park." Um, the way the education code will identify homeless children is kids that do not have a permanent place to live and are living with a friend, uh, this month, or they're living with a relative this month, those kinds of things. And so, they don't have a permanent residence. And so, those in education- And so those in education code are classified as homeless children. So that's also part of the grant. So, it's a two-year grant, five hundred thousand total, so all five hundred thousand would be coming to Eastvale. Some in, in services of, of career guidance for these at-risk youth. Some is for counseling services, some is for after-school assistance. And so it's to help them not just during school hours, but after-school hours, and also while they're not in school as well during that three-month period of time over the course of the year.
So, can we have a quick question, well, a couple of questions, but are, are these also, is this also, it's a two-year grant, but is it a renewable grant as well?
It's a renewable grant.
Also, I, I think some of us are kind of cut up too on this extra time, at least I am, on this extra time where we, you know, again, I, I think, thank you for sharing about having the boarding home as well, I think that kind of helps as well, along with what Mayor Pro Tem Rigby said about parks. Because we don't know clearly yet what we can allocate to, I think that's still probably a, a question that we're trying to figure out. And for me, it's kind of somewhat of a deciding factor, knowing if we are, we are allowed to use kind of as a patrolling hours or different areas like that, that, to be clear. But, let's say we, we're not able to use what we think we can use, right, or what we feel we can use. Is it possible to then, the city say, we just, you know, we always want to partner with C N U S D, but is it also possibly where we may, you know, contribute less of the cost? If we realize that less of the cost, that we're getting less of the service than we thought, so let's say it's, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand instead of the fifty thousand, because hey, this is what we're doing, then I think maybe it might make more sense when we're allowing, I know that's something that we'll entertain.
So, I believe the cost that we were given by Captain Hedge, correct me if I'm wrong, is two fifteen?
Approximately, with mileage.
With mileage and vehicle is, is two hundred and fifteen thousand a year. Ninety thousand of that would be covered by the grant. So there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand left over to cover the total cost, okay? So, two fifteen minus the ninety from the grant, just, we're talking for the deputy, not for the mental health services, career development, after-school care and all that. So that other hundred and twenty-five of the district is willing to pay the seventy-five thousand of that and maintain the city at fifty thousand. So, typically, an SRO for us would cost between one sixty and one ninety is what a typical cost of an SRO is. This particular arrangement would cost somewhere around the two fifteen mark. So we're willing to take on the additional expense, which is roughly an additional twenty-five thousand dollars in this particular case, to be able to fund this. So, keeping the city at fifty thousand commitment and increasing the district from a fifty thousand commitment to a seventy-five thousand dollar commitment. And that fifty thousand dollar commitment from the city would bring in a half million dollars in services to residents within the city over the course of two years.
Thank you for asking, thank you for answering.
Just to kind of piggyback and clarify off of that, so, if we find out through this additional research that we can't utilize officers or the deputy as much as we planned on over those three months, does that two hundred and fifteen decrease then, or is that, how does that, I'm not clear on that?
No, the, the two hundred and fifteen wouldn't decrease, it would remain the same, because it'll be a twelve-month contract to twenty-eight hours, which is a year. So, that wouldn't decrease at all, we'd, you'd still have to pay for the salary and the, and the mileage for the deputy.
Okay.
Captain Hedge, one, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Captain Hedge, actually, another question is, I know there's some administrat, the reason why the cost is less for C N U S D to have their officers is the city is, has to do with the ministerial issues, right? If, whereas in the, in the city, we are doing more ticketing, there's more processing of paperwork, more admin. If we were to come to find out that we were able to use, we're just gonna have a, a regular officer in these off-hours, would there be an extra charge to the city on the backside of it, because again, there's more administration fees tied to that officer's hours?
Yeah, be- because these are contracted as school resource officers, there wouldn't be an anticipated additional cost as there would be for a patrol officer or a dedicated position, it should remain the same.
Thank you. Mr. Tessari, do you have any questions? You're an expert, I want to hear this.
That wouldn't go that far. No, well, it's, it's, it's obvi, it's apparent that we need, there's another deputy needed at the school site. We do have, like, as was mentioned, like, the highest foster population in the district is right here. We do have some group homes. I think the benefit we could get, I mean, this is assuming we can't get any extra work out of this person during the off-hour, or off-months. And there would be three months when they wouldn't be in, basically, it's what, July, and then August and December.
June and July, and then, um-
December, whatever, time.
Right, December.
And then you have December, yes.
But, I mean, what it does, what, one of the things I'm thinking of is it allows somebody to actually become kind of a resident expert on at-risk youth in our community. Many of the problems when it comes to graffiti, or vandalism, or burglaries, car theft, there is a certain segment of our population in the community that you can point at that the majority of these incidents are generated from, and that's a lot of the at-risk youth. So I think having a constant interaction with a law enforcement officer may actually impact us rather greatly. And it's somebody who, who would know who to go to, they learn their M O's, they know what certain kids are up to. So I think there's, there's, there's a real possibility for some great benefit to having that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have two quick questions. The school resource officer, if that was, that additional one, if that was to be put in place, is that specifically on the school grounds, or are they allowed to park their car out front in the median area, like at Eleanor Roosevelt, or help with mitigating traffic? Or are they strictly on the school campus?
Well, well, this position here would be an outreach and intervention position, so although they would be on campus, they would also be off of campus doing house checks and after-hours checks, so they might not be working strictly SRO hours during the day. But they will have a, a black and white marked unit that they will be, you know, parking wherever they're at, whether it's in front of the school or in certain areas throughout the community. So they will have a presence out there.
Yeah, I, I guess my question is, is one of our concerns with, around the schools and traffic, around the schools has to deal with traffic. So with this additional body, are we able to utilize him and his presence, or her presence outside on the street to help with traffic issues around the school that, I don't know if it's stretching the, the court, but-
Remember, there's still a second SRO there. And so now this SRO may have the opportunity to free up some time of the other SRO that doesn't have those restrictions that can go out and help work traffic and those kinds of things.
Because my, my thought is with that, that, that on, that not only helps us there, but that also frees up our other resources of our law enforcement, to be able to utilize those resources that, for instance, maybe our motor that, that spends a lot of time by the high school, now he can start to work other areas rather than just focusing at the high school, because now we have two re, school resource officers. My other question is, is on, on the summary here, it says that any city that receives funding must convene an advisory council to help make spending decisions. Do we have any direction on how that council is formed? Because my concern with that would be, if we're making these decisions on how this money's gonna be spent now, what if this council is residents that aren't here tonight, and they decide to spend the money otherwise? Do you have any direction on how that council's formed?
We had discussed this during our meeting with the grant writer, and she had indicated this is a structure that would be developed as part of the grant application process. So, that, it's, it's kind of, this is some details that would need to come back to you, kind of outlining how that, that is proposed. But you typically would have some community stakeholders, representatives from the school district, potentially council members as stakeholders, public safety commissioners. These are all things that we can kind of, details we can hammer out in the grant application. So some of your, your questions are very pertinent, and they're certainly things that we can take back to the grant writer and see if she can incorporate these points into the grant. To your question about the traffic in front of the school on Scholar Way, I, I know what you're talking about, I've seen the black and white in the center median doing traffic stops. It may be kind of splitting hairs a little bit in the grant application, because that's really traffic, that's really a traffic officer. The school resource officer, if he were arriving to school and saw some egregious activity on Scholar Way, obviously, he has the powers to, to do something about it. But as far as, are we splitting hairs in the grant application to utilize that SRO for an hour during peak traffic to do nothing but traffic enforcement on Scholar Way? I don't know, we're gonna have to talk to the grant writer and see how that can be written and, and into the grant to, to accommodate. Based on the attachments to the staff report, that does not appear to be the focus of this grant.
Do we have any further questions right now?
Well, I just think, you know, obviously, we need to get as much flexibility written into it as possible.
Yeah, she's gonna have some, her work cut out for her wordsmithing and massaging it, but she seems very confident and has done this grant many times before.
Yeah, and it's not necessarily a matter of the, having that deputy go out there and do traffic enforcement, it's just park it in the center, you know, divider, or in, you know, it's the presence. It's the presence, you know, with the kids at, at the schools. You know, I, I've noticed over the last year or two that the number of fights has increased. They, oh, the, the vandalisms, the, the graffiti, that's all, it's all been going up, so that, it, it's, it's paramount to get some more police presence on campus there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so-
At this time, just-
Flexibility and, you know, splitting hairs, you know, there's, every, every deputy out there, they're a law enforcement officer. I mean, if they see something happen, and, you know, there's, there's action that needs to be taken, they're gonna take it, whether they're being grant-funded or not, so.
If I, if I could also, there was one question from council that came prior to the, the meeting, and I was asked to give some data on student population at various high schools, and there's the number of school resource officers. Getting that data was a little bit difficult to obtain, but what we do have for you is that Eleanor Roosevelt has currently approximately forty-three hundred students, and that does not include the STEM Academy, is that correct?
Correct.
It does include, okay.
Well, it, it includes the STEM students, but it doesn't include the STEM population once the building is open.
Correct.
So that'll be potentially fifty-five hundred, once, once out of the building's open.
Currently, we have forty-three hundred students at Roosevelt, one full-time SRO and one that's shared. Norco High School has a student population of approximately twenty-two forty-four. These are, and they have one SRO. Euripa Valley High School has a student population of approximately sixteen hundred, and they have one SRO. We were not able to obtain data for Corona, as far as their number of, SROs, Corona High School has a student population of twenty-nine thirty-three. Santiago has a student population of thirty-six ninety-two. Centennial High School has a student population of thirty-three zero-six. And Chino Hills High School has a prop, a pox, excuse me, approximate population of three thousand. Unfortunately, we don't know the number of SROs for those.
Correct me if I'm wrong, especially with members of the district here. Those schools each have one resource officer, and the city splits that cost with the district, correct?
In Corona.
In Corona, correct, okay.
And for the high schools that are in Corona, that is Corona P D, that is not a contract with the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Newberry, I think you wanted to say something?
No, I was just going to say, there was, there's only one at all, of our comprehensive high schools.
I, I just have a comment, I, I think it's one of the things that we look at, law enforcement and public safety is obviously our top priority for the city as well as, as council members. That's our biggest priority, is public safety, we want to make sure that our residents are safe, people that do business, people that go to school, people that travel through the city are safe. And I think we need to make sure that we utilize our funds as well as our resources properly. We need to make sure that we, we do our due diligence as much as we can. I think this is a great idea, I think this is something that we still need to look a little bit further into, the, the areas that we talked about. But it's also one of those areas that I think we need to look at it as an investment. You look at it as, from a business side, we're being asked as a city to contribute fifty thousand dollars for a return of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of services that are gonna be provided to the city. It's not a hundred percent directly to the city, there's partial being provided to the school, but overall, it, it still encompasses our residents and our, our city. I think fifty thousand dollars for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment is something that I, I feel is worth us continuing to at least move forward right now. If there's something catastrophic that changes that, then I think we still are able to back out.
Correct, that's, that is my understanding with the, from the discussion with the grant writer, that she would craft the grant app. What we need right now is council to authorize us to move forward with the grant resolution. She would prepare the grant application along with the resolution, and we can bring back the details of the grant application pending, you know, approval. She did indicate that if, if there was something in the grant application that the council truly did, objected to, you have an opportunity to withdraw your application or deny the funds. Is that correct?
Mr. Plow?
Kind of council or Mayor Pro Tem Rigby kind of touched on it, but just, yeah, to simplify, I think you're getting the best, this is money well-spent. Not only is it two hundred and fifty thousand dollar value, but you're getting five hundred thousand dollars in services. I think it's something that we need to do, it, there's, there's, we need to provide better services at our schools, I think it's right. Just reading briefly, I'm not here to dissect it, that's what, that's what the grant writers are there for, but just on the, just kind of going over the eligible activities, it is, to me, when I read it, it's very broad on what can be done with this officer, when I read it, there's, there's a lot of room. Again, didn't get too much in the details of it, but just reading the first couple paragraphs in the list, very broad. Yeah, I, I think this is something that we, we should look forward to doing.
Yeah, I, I agree, and one thing we shouldn't overlook is the actual benefits that these kids are gonna get out of it.
So I think, just to follow up with some of your comments that, that you all have made, is that this grant has been awarded to the city of Corona previously. And, and so, there is the ability to learn from them how they used their Corona P D officer during the three-month period of time from the funds of this grant. So they have already gone down this road and kind of already done it. So we do have the ability to learn from the city of Corona on, on what they happen to do over the course of the summer months or the winter months, or whatever they, they happen to do. So, they have been awarded that grant, this grant previously.
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of questions before we move forward and give direction. The SRO position, is this a dedicated position, meaning it's the same person always?
Yes.
Yes, okay. For those three months, do we have a guarantee of hours during that time, given it's one person?
It's forty hours per week.
Okay, and during those three months, so we would be able to see a hundred and twenty hours theoretically of patrol time in the city?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'd classify it as patrol time, however, they're scheduled twenty, twenty-eighty hours a year, and so if they take time off or vacation- And so if they take time off or vacation or sick time, so.
Would be during those three months?
Yeah, in a, hopefully not, but in a best case scenario, you'd see them twenty-eighty, two thousand eighty hours.
Okay, all right. Given the size of, would this officer be at ERHS in the STEM Academy?
Yes, we would house the officer at Roosevelt High School.
Okay, and given the size, the projected size of the STEM Academy and what is currently at Roosevelt, is this something that the district without this grant would have been doing in bringing another, a second resource officer?
Currently, we don't have those plans. Moving forward, and when I say currently, I mean, we go, we project financially three years, current year and two years out. So currently, we don't, but in the future, that is something that we're gonna look at.
Okay, all right. I just had one last comment. Sorry, I hate to keep, keep this going. In the future, if we have to reapply for this grant, I would like to see us possibly partner with JCSD and maybe coordinate. I don't know if there's a way that the three of us could pitch in on this because if we could get them, if we can utilize them on the parks, I know JCSD, that our parks deputy is overwhelmed and that I'm sure she could use the help. So if we could get them to buy in on this program too, it may help all of us.
Yeah, I'm sure there's probably another grant, you know.
Yeah, I, I would like to move a motion for, to authorize staff to proceed with this application as we've directed.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the floor. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plott?
Yes.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Lorimer?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you for your time today.
So I did, we were able to contact Dr. Goines at Roosevelt and Roosevelt will be supplying candles for the public for Friday nights, Friday afternoon's vigil.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to item eight point three and this is the initiation of a transient, transient occupancy tax ballot measure, or TOT for short. Mrs. Nissen. Are you able to do this?
Good evening, Mayor Lorimer and councilmembers. This item before you is to get council approval to move forward with initiating a transient occupancy tax ballot measure that I am proposing that we place on the November ballot. Currently, the city of Eastville does not have the hotel. However, when we incorporated, we, we assumed many of the current ordinances that were on the books for Western Riverside County. One of those was the TOT rate, which was established at ten percent. And having done a, a general survey of surrounding communities, we have found that the TOT rates in our surrounding area range anywhere from ten percent to thirteen percent. At this time, we do have significant interest from several hotels to locate in the city of Eastville. And other than having an auto dealership in the city, a TOT tax is the largest direct revenue source, ongoing revenue stream for the city general fund. So with that, I would propose that we get ahead of this curve in having a hotelier arrive. I'm, I'm not, we don't have a date certain, but the interest is there. And I would like to propose bumping the TOT rate up at least to two percent. That since this is a tax, it does have to go to a vote of the people. And part of that whole process requires city attorney writing a ballot measure, public relations to make sure that we are successful in the education and outreach, understanding for the citizens that will be voting on this, why this is important to the future of our city. And also engaging consultants to conduct a citywide hotel study and absorption rate analysis.
So i- i- if I might?
Yes.
We wouldn't be advocating, we would be educating, right?
Yes, educating.
Okay.
The, the citizens, the voters, yes. So outreach and education about the ballot initiative. So really, I'm just looking for consensus from the council. If a council wishes to move forward with looking at our TOT, the estimated cost to, to do this is between forty and seventy-five thousand dollars. Between the costs, estimating cost from the registrar of voters for this item started at approximately eighteen thousand dollars, then hotel study costs and consultants. You know, we're putting it at a ballpark between forty to seventy-five thousand dollars. However, I would like the council to, to understand that just a two percent TOT increase on one hotel operating under, I'm just, I'm kinda giving you the math just so you have some assumptions to, to operate under. If you had a hundred and twenty-room hotel at a hundred and thirty dollars a night with seventy-five percent stabilized occupancy at a twelve percent TOT rate, you're looking at roughly five hundred and twelve thousand dollars versus if we left it alone and didn't touch it, you're looking at four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So I do see a long-term benefit in bumping this, especially if you have multiple hotels that are coming into the area. So the return on your initial investment, I think, can be substantiated with the increase in the TOT revenue in the long term. So it would be a one-time expense for this ballot measure, whereas your increase in revenue would be ongoing. And this is not something that can be taken by the state.
Gotcha.
Just have a question.
Thank you for that. I, I think there will be some questions, but first, Mr. Aguilar, are there any public comments?
We have received none.
Does anybody, anybody like to submit? Yes, Mr. Hernandez, please.
Can you please come to the podium, please?
First question I have is how soon are we expecting hotels in the city? By ten years and we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars?
No, sir. We are currently in discussions with hotels at this time.
And what do we anticipate when they may be starting to build or complete?
Uh, well, we're, we are significantly along in the discussions. If you look at the Goodman Commerce Center plan, there is a land set aside for a hotel. We already have a user that has identified that area and has indicated that they wish to proceed as soon as the retail component gets off the ground. This was an announcement I was gonna make later today, but Costco has begun grading today. So the retail component is moving forward. I would suspect you're gonna see that hotel open their doors within the next year or two. Well, two on the, on the top end. But if you don't time this ballot measure with a general election, your fees are way more expensive. If you have to do a special, a special election, just because you want to visit, revisit your TOT, the cost of that entire election is borne squarely on the city's shoulders. It's not shared with, with the registrar of voters' countywide election process. So that's part of the reason why I'm trying to time this with the November ballot, 'cause it would be cheaper.
Um, Mr. Hernandez, did you have some other comments as opposed to questions?
Yes, so clearly, have we studied what the draw of people wanting to rent a room or hotel in the city may be within two to five years?
This is why I'm asking to initiate a hotel study. This is. No, sir. That, that seventy-five thousand dollars is the estimated cost of the registrar of voters' fees for, for, yes, for it to go on. That's the, that's the total of all of, of the consultants, the hotel study, absorption rate, registrar of voters, it's a whole shebang.
I, I appreciate you answering his questions, Mr. Hernandez though. No, thank you, sir. I appreciate, always appreciate your comments and questions. So thank you. Did anybody else have any comments or questions, I should say? I should say comments, actually. Hearing none, yes?
Add one more, one more item to the, to Mr. Hernandez's point. We have multiple hotels that are, that are knocking on the door. So this isn't just for the benefit of one. There's the LEO property that the city council just entitled in December that has land use for a hotel. The Palopolis project that is currently situated above Silver Lakes. It's in escrow with the Lewis Development Community, or Lewis Development, and they have hotels that are interested. So we have the, we have the interest, we have the draw. And this hotel study will kind of flesh all of this out. That's the first step. If the hotel study comes back and says, yeah, you know, you don't need a hotel, then, then we don't move forward. But we know that's not the case. There, the need is here. Norco's hotels are, are booming. The Silver Lakes project brings, which isn't even in our city, but it brings in roughly three million visitors a year to our borders. I think we are in a position to capitalize on that sports tourism along with having two Amazon facilities here. Audi, Porsche, Volkswagen Global Training Center that's bringing in visitors internationally from all over the world. As well as we have business travelers for Granger, Shamrock Foods, Prologis, Snapware. These are all some of our biggest employers that are in the northern panhandle of Eastville and, and I think they'd like to stay in Eastville if they could.
Do we have any questions from the council?
I do. Mr. Plott? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you said that, what was the, they go nameless the hotels, but what's the average size that we're kind of seeing with the hotels that are interested? The average room size is what I'm asking for. How many rooms are they looking at to build?
You know, it, it really kind of depends on which location you're looking at. The Palopolis property, the hoteliers that are, that have been inquiring have been looking at anywhere from a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty rooms. The, the Goodman Commerce Center has had some very, very interesting interests as of late where there's now multiple hotels that are looking to come to that location, knowing that they would be right next door to each other. So potentially four hundred total rooms in that project.
And I wanna make just one comment.
And then you have the LEO parcel as well.
Yeah, and our city manager kind of alluded to it, but yeah, if anybody kind of goes around that Silver Lakes and understands soccer and how that works as far as on the youth side of it, there's thousands and thousands, a week, families that come here and they're here in Eastville. I don't care where it's at. I know it's in Norco, but they're here in Eastville. You need to take advantage and capitalize on the opportunity and to simply raise our TOT, TOT tax at two, you know, two percent, seventy-five thousand dollar cost to take advantage of this election period to get eighty-five thousand dollars on one hundred and thirty-room hotel. It's a no-brainer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. With the TOT tax, has that come up at all in any of the discussions? Is that a concern of any of these hotels that are interested? Do you think, do you feel that that will be detrimental to these hotelers at all?
No, they, I mean, they inquire what's the TOT rate, but it's not something that they pay. So what, what I will share with you is that hotel financing is very difficult. It's a very, most hotels do not break even until you're, between year three and five. So I anticipate that a hotel may ask us for some type of TOT sharing agreement, in which case if you have a higher rate on the front end, your window to, on that sharing agreement can be narrowed based on obviously what kind of dollar amount they're looking for. And this is not something that's paid by the citizens either, unless of course the citizen is renting a room in our own city, which, you know, may happen. But this is for visitors and I think you would all agree that when you go rent a room somewhere when you're on vacation, I don't think you're asking what your TOT rate is. It, it really doesn't come into play until you're booking large conventions and have blocks of rooms. So it's, it, right now, that's not been any kind of obstacle or benefit in having a low rate, except it hurts us on the revenue side.
Mr. Tesari?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to put it in really plain language, how much more am I gonna pay for a room? Like, like two fifty, three bucks?
Well, if your room were a hundred and thirty dollars and we had ten percent TOT rate, you do the math, it's not that, it's, it's a few dollars more. It's, this is, this will be relatively imperceptible. Yeah, you're, you're bumping it two percent. It's, this would not be similar, this is not gonna be apples to apples with like going to Las Vegas where you have a fifteen percent TOT rate, then you have a resort fee, then you have this and that, and all of a sudden your hundred and twenty-dollar room becomes a two-hundred-dollar room.
Yeah, my, my concern would just be pricing ourselves, you know, encouraging people to go to other hotels in other cities first.
No, at this time, we are, we're on the low, we're on the lower end.
It seems insignificant.
You're looking at a two-dollar and sixty-cent difference. And I think also as a reminder, this is not us voting tonight on whether or not this tax is going into place. This is us voting on whether or not we're gonna allow this to go to a ballot measure for the residents to vote on whether or not this tax is put into place.
Correct. You're, you're basically blessing staff to move forward. Any contracts for consultants that we engage for this? Would obviously, based on the dollar amounts, would have to come back to council for approval. So there, this will be coming back to you incrementally as we move towards the path to November.
I, I do have a couple of questions. You guys, are you guys good so far?
Well, I was gonna bring up the seventy-five thousand dollar figure. That's on the high end. It may be less, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
As low as forty?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
The seventy-five, does that include or exclude the cost of a consultant?
Well, one of the estimates that I've received so far for doing a, a hotel study and absorption rate analysis has been twelve thousand dollars. So.
No, but I'm talking about political consultant?
Oh, the PR firm?
Yeah.
That has, that's a price tag we have yet to be determined, but I, I don't foresee it exceeding the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold.
Okay.
But we could certainly make sure that, that this is a not to exceed expense.
You had mentioned there's a number of interested parties and I, there's a follow-up and I think that you answered it, but there's a follow-up to two of the questions really. But by changing this, having that two percent change, I think there are people that go and utilize a price line. I don't know if that, they, they go by an area, right? They'll say, okay, the larger Corona area, and somebody will maybe make a difference on a couple dollars of where they stay. I don't know if the TOT is included in that asking price on, on the website. I, I, I'm just curious as to whether or not, one, we make ourselves less competitive and, two, if it changes the minds of the hotelier coming in and their interest. and their interest by having a change in TOT. Because why would they ask what our TOT is if it doesn't matter to them?
Because some of the hoteliers are quite familiar with the surrounding communities. So, for example, the city of Norco charges twelve, twelve percent. I'm trying to, Riverside is thirteen. So, it's, it's not, we're not competitive. The price of the hotel room itself is what people are gauging their decisions on, not the TOT tax. Usually, the TOT tax, you really don't see it until you close out your bill at the hotel because it is a tax on any other amenities. And citizens that are residents, visitors, they look at the amenities of the hotel as well. So, you know, we're looking at higher-end hotels with swimming pools and conference rooms and banquet halls. You know, these are, this is not a Motel Six.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. The, this is a political question, and therefore, I have a question as to whether or not you have thought about the political climate of this coming November. Specifically, that there is going to be efforts underway that are going to be fighting taxes and putting forward something to increase taxes at the same time, if that is been thought through as to passage likelihood?
Yes, sir. That's a great question, Mayor Lorimer, and that is something that I have thought of. And that's why I would suggest that part of this proposal is engaging a PR firm. If you look at, for example, the city of Moreno Valley, they tried to put forth a TOT tax several years ago to do the same thing, bump their rate, and they didn't engage in any PR, any communication and outreach. They just, you know, wrote it up, threw it on the ballot, and it failed because it just said the word "tax", and there are people that are just tax adverse. So, we need the citizens to understand why this is a benefit to the city, why this is a long-term benefit, what kind of, you know, to understand the pros and cons. So, there's definitely an education component because we do not want to get caught up in the anti-tax climate.
Yeah. Sir, I just want to make one comment to your comment. In regards, I think there's a way to look at this in the hotels. There's, and let's take out the visitor factors, maybe there's family visitors. There's really two large groups that you're going to get from these hotels. And again, Michelle kind of brought it up, is you'll have, obviously, the huge majority, especially on the weekends, you're going to have the sports. They're going to be here. Those people typically are going to go wherever the locality is at. And that's just by design. They'll go to locality. Then you have the corporate entities that kind of mentioned. Those people, those people already have adjusted rates that already work with, if, let's just say, for instance, it's a, I don't know what it is, but it's a Hilton Garden Inn or Marriott Courtyard, or wherever the case may be. They already have corporate rate. They are going to those places at the, wherever's closest to those facilities because those rates have already been adjusted for Pro Lodges or for Shamrock Foods or for Volvo. They've already established those rates for them on a corporate rate. So, they'll, they will automatically come to us. I don't know if it's not going to be a price line pick. It'll be something they already have worked out within their company. Just, just a kind of a thought. I was thinking about that. It was a good question.
That's a very good point. You know, with the Naval Warfare Assessment Station, you have a significant number of federal employees that come into the area, and they do get a government rate that you, that is not your price line type of.
But regardless, we still get that same TOT tax for the rate, so.
That's correct.
Any other comments or questions? I did one thing and one comment. Raising of taxes at all, it's coming from somewhere. I, some of the discussion was, well, it's not coming from the residents. It's not coming from the business itself. Who it's going to be coming from are people that are visiting town, our friends, our neighbors, or taxing our in-laws that are coming to see us that aren't staying at the house. So, that, that's, that money is going to come from somewhere. So, I put that out there. But at this time, you are looking for a motion?
I'm looking for some direction from the council if you wish for staff to proceed with this.
I'd like to. If I make a motion or go on?
And certainly, as we vet through more of the details, should the climate of the council change, this is something that we can just pitch and hold to another time.
I'm going to read the recommendation here then. The recommendation is to authorize staff to proceed with initiating a transient occupancy tax ballot measure and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreement to facilitate the transient occupancy tax ballot measure. That is what is being asked of us today.
I'll definitely motion both those recommendations.
I have one last question. I apologize. This forty to seventy-five thousand dollars, where are we, where do we see budget-wise this coming from?
In the city manager's budget, I have a one hundred thousand dollar allowance for economic development. This is, this falls under economic development. Also, in the city council's budget, there is another cushion in there for economic development initiatives as well.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that we have that budgeted, that it's something that we have, that we're spending.
Yes, we have some areas that we can take it from. I also have another line item under the city manager's budget for consultant services.
Thank you.
I will find the money.
No, no. I have some concerns about whether or not this is even viable. Can we get some information from some experts that know about this PR firm that you're talking about? Can we talk to them first about the likelihood of something like this passing before moving forward with these others? Or are we on a strict deadline?
We have some time, but in order to get this measure written and on the ballot, we need to submit it to the registrar of voters by June. Late May, early June, in order for it to appear on the November ballot.
I may be the only one that has this concern, though, so I put this out there.
My, I agree with you. My only objection is we're spending money to make additional revenue. So, if we're utilizing our funds, rather than, we're doing it, and I get your concerns with taxing, but we're utilizing this money to gain more revenues. Not, we're not using this cost to, ultimately, if, if, if it passes. I think that there is a contingency. If it does pass, then yes. But that's, in essence, what we're trying to do. I, that's why I don't see a problem with it. But I, if we have time, which sounds like we do, I have no problem with entertaining that just to gain more time. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor. I'd like to see, because, to me, it's a gamble. I'd like to see some better understanding of what the likelihood is that it would actually pass. I can't even say I would vote for it myself, but it's going to be up to the residents of Eastvale, so.
Well, one of the reasons in bringing this forth to the council is, and number one, just to gauge your temperature on this, but also, the, you know, the threshold for financial decisions from the city manager is, has a limit. So, each of those consultants that I engage, if it exceeds a certain dollar amount, it has to come back to you. So, this is not necessarily, you know, you're going to bless it and then we're off to the races and it never comes back to the council. There will be more consultants coming. If you would like, we can establish an ad hoc committee. You could have the Economic Development Committee sort of drive this a little bit more and meet with some of the consultants to understand the complexities and the probability of success.
Mr. Pla? I do agree with the mayor. I think if you're going to do this, you want to take the best marketing possible. If we're going to spend this money, you want to make sure it's a win, right? That we get the votes that we need. So, you definitely want to, you know, interview that process to make sure we have the best marketing possible to gain those votes, so.
Absolutely. This is not something that I plan to take down the path to failure. This is, this is trying to set us up for some success. Long-term financial success. This isn't a decision to be taken lightly, but I think you have an opportunity here to capitalize on a very large election. And with the right polling, potentially, that may be a component that the PR firm wishes to engage is some polling to see where the citizens are at. I mean, if the citizen polling shows that, you know, only twenty percent of them support this, then, then we have a problem. And you, and you know that, okay, we need to consider this another day, another time. If the support is there, then this, these are the kind of things that would move this along. This isn't going to happen overnight, but this is typically what is done when you're talking about a ballot measure that involves taxes. If you recall, when the school district did Measure U or Measure GG, there was significant polling. Those were, those are taxes that were paid directly from our citizens' own pockets. This is a little bit different, but we would engage similar tactics to ensure successful.
I would echo the comments before. I agree. I don't think, especially since we have the time, I don't think we need to rush into something that we aren't completely sure about. I also don't think that we need to lump everything together right now to rush into a decision, such as lumping the consultant, the registrar fees. So, I think if we're going to move forward with this, that we can break it down if we need to. We can break it down and say, "We're going to allocate X amount right now", that the city manager can go and contact the PR firm and start to investigate and see if it's worth us moving forward with, rather than saying, "Hey, we're going to give seventy-five thousand dollars towards this", so.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I think you misunderstood my intent here was not to lump everything together. It's strictly to give you a, an estimated potential cost on the different elements of this process. This is, this is obviously something that each, this would involve probably requests for proposals for the different components, an RFP, RFQ with different bids. This will take time. And then selecting a consultant for public relations and polling, selecting a consultant for the hotel study and absorption rate analysis. There's at least three different components to this. Obviously, the new city attorney is going to have to write the ballot measure. And then, you know, the fourth component is the registrar of voters, and we already have an estimated cost from them. So, excuse me. This is not, this was not, this was simply to gauge the council's interest. If the council doesn't wish to move forward with this, then we, then we, we don't. But part of moving forward and making a decision is, do you want us to engage a PR firm so that we can find out what the citizens would support?
That, I appreciate that clarification. That is different than what I see here, but I appreciate the clarification. If that is the case, is there a motion that will address that coming from the council?
Yeah, I think it warrants further study. So, yeah, I would move approval.
And that approval is?
That you engage-
A PR firm?
Yeah, the PR firm. And get the ball rolling.
Okay.
Is there a cost on there that we have to approve for that, or? Is that under your threshold?
It depends on what the bids come in at. That's, that's why this is somewhat nebulous. You know, we can do a request for proposal or an RFQ, or we can request informal bids, but then, based on those dollar amounts, the contract may have to come back to the council for selection. Ideally, I would probably engage the Economic Development Committee and let them review the various proposals for a PR firm and help make a recommendation to council if it exceeds the city manager's authorization threshold.
Taking that feedback in, do you want to incorporate that into your motion, sir?
Yes, yeah. I mean, it's a tough, it's, it's, for me, it's, I'm torn. You know, I have a revulsion for anything taxed. But I understand it's the will of the voters and, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility to the city to try and increase revenues and make us economically viable in the future. So, you know, if the people choose to go ahead and, I mean, it's the, it's the least punitive tax to the residents, so I would, I would move, I would put forth that motion again that we move forward.
I agree. Just keep it to the people. Let them vote on it. Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm hearing different motions. What are you hearing, Stephen?
There's a motion on the floor to engage, to allow the city manager to engage a PR firm.
Okay. To engage a PR firm. Is there a dollar amount attached to that? Is there anything to do with the subcommittee as part of your motion?
Let me withdraw my motion and reconsider, okay? Get my thoughts together on this.
Okay. Sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on this phone, sir.
That's okay, because what kind of dollar amount are you talking about?
If I can, let me step back a moment here. If the council says, "Please engage a PR firm", then staff will start with an initial inquiry with a PR firm to see what the dollar threshold is. They're, under our purchasing and contract protocol, if it exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars, it has to be a formal request for proposal. So, those guidelines kind of govern how this is going to proceed. If it's, you know, eight thousand dollars to engage a PR firm, then that is a decision where I would at least collect three informal bids, take that to the Economic Development Committee and let them help make a recommendation to me. That is a decision that can be made at the city manager's level based on our purchasing agreement. So, there's, there's a, there's a product, process in place that governs what contract thresholds come back to the council for execution. I do think it's important to engage Economic Development Committee in this process.
So, what was that?
You guys, I'm going to say, did you agree with that? To engage the Economic Development Committee, then also approve a motion?
Put it into a motion, sir. Go for it.
Make a motion to approve an Economic Development Committee to discuss this and also to, to look for, to engage with the PR firm. Is that, Stephen, is that pretty clear?
It's clear.
Okay. Okay. We have a first. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Pla?
I'm sorry. One second. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Pla?
Yes.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Proter Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Lorimer?
No.
Motion passes three, one.
Okay, that concludes our city council business. Moving on to item number nine, that's the city manager report and city staff reports. This is Nissen.
Good evening, council members. As I had stated earlier, Costco began their grading today. So, you will see some coming soon signs, coming soon. So, we're very excited about that. They have also stepped up their grand opening date to June thirtieth. So, which is several months accelerated from the original November first opening. So, full steam ahead on that project. We're very excited to be shopping at Costco soon. Would also like to share with you that on Friday, the assistant city manager recruitment closed, and we had over ninety applicants for the assistant city manager position. Now, go figure. Everyone wants to be in Eastvale. We had applicant- Um, uh, we had applicants from all over the United States, some as far as Georgia, uh, um, Michigan, Texas, Florida. Um, so a, a lot of applicants, um, to choose from. Our recruiting firm is going through making first and second cuts, and, um, at this time, they have whittled down that list to thirty of the, uh, most qualified. And, um, that will continue to move through the process, um, and potentially panel interviews in February.
Excellent. So when are you gonna get better?
I would love to have my voice back.
Key is rest.
Yes, exactly. Do we have any other reports?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members. I know it's kinda late, but just to give you a couple of reports. We have successfully weathered the first winter storm that we have, uh, a couple days ago. It was about an inch and a half inch, uh, of rain, and this is as a result of Zone Two Storm drain project that we did. Just wanna share a couple pictures, uh, real quick. This is, uh, Country Fair Citrus. Um, the first picture here is, um, uh, Country Fair. Uh, we adding gas basins here and a couple more here and on the other side, uh, to pick up all the water from the neighborhood before it goes to Citrus. And this is, uh, was taken at the, in the middle of the storm itself, uh, used to be before these gas basins were installed, the water just, and the first lane is all flooded here. You cannot pass into this, uh, lane going from, uh, from High School Westbound. So, um, this gas basin had been very successful to pick up all the flow from the, from the neighbors, from the neighborhood. And the second picture is sixty-fifth, I'm sorry, fifty-eighth at Hamner, um, just across from Swan Lake. We have added a couple of gas basins, um, one is, um, right here, I'm sorry, um.
I like the sound effect.
I don't know what sound that is. Just don't mind. One is a gas basin right here, um, north of sixty-fifth, um, south of fifty-eight. The other one is the inlet at the gutter, and if you look at the berm here, it's a Lille, uh, property, um, um, to the west and north of fifty-eight and south of fifty-eight. So this has been, uh, successfully picked up the flow, also that's been always, uh, in this corner here in the sections. So that is, uh, the report about, um, uh, the storm, and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, if you do. Otherwise, I have a second report that is, uh, more interesting and, um, just make it quick. I understand you may have a lot of questions. It's about slurry seal project. This past, a couple months, been, um, grueling for public work staff. Um, it's a very interesting project. We, uh, cover about three hundred segments of streets in Eastville with slurry seal, uh, yet, uh, not without, um, uh, challenges. And, um, happy to share with you that we are almost at the end of it in, in the, uh, in the next few weeks, gonna be completing this. Pencil has been, and, uh, has been, uh, developed, and it's gonna be corrected. Sliding work is estimated to be completed, and a few more is going to be completed, um, in the next week or two after the rain here. And the seat sweeping would be, uh, continually be done usually two to three times after the slurry seal. And with that, I want to go to the type of slurry that we use. We use type two slurry, not type one, because type one normally is almost like, uh, like a paint, paint job. It's like very smooth. Type two is thicker material, uh, cover all the cracks. It, um, um, adds about five to seven years of the pavement age. And, and, and it is rougher, uh, but it is, uh, very common for, for residential areas to be used. So there is not, nothing, nothing new that we spec, um, with the project. We did, we did use this, uh, same material last time, two thousand fourteen, we did the first slurry. And the loose aggregates, you know, after the slurry is applied, a couple days later, there's a sweeper as part of the contract that would go sweeping the streets, sweeping the loose materials. As the street being driven by cars, more material's gonna be unraveling a little bit, which is normal, and, um, the sweeper's gonna come back and sweep again. So, uh, until about three, four months, maybe, finally it wears out and wears down and all, um, it becomes smoother. So, um, again, um, this is a project update that we have right now. Any questions? So we have, uh, FAQs that, um, we shared with you before, um, you know, at, on your desk and you're on your seat there, and this is posted online, so residents can also read this and, and, and they have four numbers here, they can call us if they have questions. Thank you for the attention you have. Any questions? Be able to answer you. Thank you.
Just a heck of a change from previous winters. That's a great job with the stone drains.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. It's awesome.
That's on our report tonight.
Yeah, it was really bad.
Any other reports this time? No? Yes, yes, we do. We got all kinds of reports. Come on, let's do it.
It's on, working?
Yeah.
It's working.
It's working.
Um, just to start up a, um, new state of the, the nine-nine, di- fifteen interchange. Uh, as, as a huge project, it's been ongoing for many years, and the environmental design studies has been ongoing. Um, we, we, the, the schedule has slipped somewhat from last time that you heard. Uh, originally, it was going to be out to bid about this time, and we were gonna, the project would be starting construction around June, has been pushed back about three and a half months. Part of the problem's been, uh, well, the first trickle path, the trickle path was right away, came right away. Uh, the county's delayed three months for the, uh, out of the resolution necessity, which happened yesterday, and with the adoption of the resolution necessity, it allows them to go forward with the, with the rain. Uh, the next step is, uh, at, in the judge's court, uh, the judge will, uh, allow for possession to take place within sixty days. And that did help the process in a way, quite, quite a bit. And what happens is, uh, it's necessary for the county to deposit the fair market value when they can take possession of the property. So, uh, some of the property owners are very close to settling, and pretty much all have worked through the issues, but they haven't settled yet. So, that was a trickle path. Now, that's happened, next trickle path item is a utility agreement. We still have a number of utilities that, that agreements haven't been approved, finalized. The county's still working on, I'm, I'm, for some of the agreements, and so they need to get through that process. That's next. Um, I asked a question, if the utilities were approved in the imminent process, and they were, but the county has to pair all utility agreements presented to the utilities first. Utilities are much more complicated, such as dealing with rights of way and locations and so forth. And, uh, then there's some design issues, the cal, the roof, the, the cattle transfers and design exceptions. This project, right now, the schedule shows it's starting in September, and being completed April, March, April of twenty twenty. Uh, that concludes two Christmas holidays. Um, we're gonna watch that very closely. There is some talk, um, with the new, uh, construction manager firm, uh, Alka Engineering out of Corona. They're looking at ways of, uh, adjusting, uh, the base of the pride connect, and so the thought is that the, those ramps, if you can strike it first to keep the three-way interchange open, and when you look at those timelines and, uh, when the project is awarded, obviously, and see if that can work out, that the first Christmas holiday, uh, the, the, the ranch remain open, and immediately after the first of the year, then, uh, the interchange will close, and then this is second Christmas holiday. That's kind of the way it's shaping up right now with the current, it's, uh, happening. Um, with that, I'm glad to answer questions.
Any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. How does that affect the Hamner Bridge construction? Cause I know that they were trying, we were trying to have that one finished right as the Hamner Bridge finished. We wanna make sure they both completed in the right timeframe for the funding.
Uh, realizing they started to work on, uh, the landhead bridge, it will lose, oh, maybe fifty or sixty percent of the capacity of that bridge, and that's one reason we're working on Hamner, while the process, or the two lakes, well, links, or down south out of Camden, uh, and Hamner will remain open. And the intent is when we finish our project, and the grid project starts, so it will delay the Hamner grid project, and, uh, it has to be completed by twenty, twenty-three or two days. So it's concerned.
But are, the delay?
Are three months delayed, it's gonna be like three months delayed for Hamner to start.
But all that still works in our timeframe for that funding?
It, it, we should still be okay.
Okay.
Well, just wanna add a little more, uh, Mayor Protem. Um, Hamner Avenue Bridge right now is actually lagging in the process. They are still doing the EIR. Uh, they are not ready to, um, to go for construction anyway right now. The design is still under go, uh, uh, quite a bit, and the last I heard, they're gonna start actually, uh, early twenty twenty-one to be done by twenty twenty-three. But, uh, yeah, well, keeps our fingers crossed, I hope there is no more sliding, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions this time? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Zapplegate?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I usually have a pretty loud voice, so it shouldn't be a problem. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I do have a few upcoming events that I would like to share. I did want to correct the time that I referenced earlier this evening, um, regarding the candlelight celebration of life to honor Mrs. Rachel Black at Eleanor Roosevelt High School that will be held this Friday, January twelfth, in the Quad. It will be from four thirty PM to six PM. So four thirty PM to six PM. On January fifteenth, um, City Hall will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, and we will resume business hours on the following day, January sixteenth, at seven thirty AM. On January eighteenth, the Eastville Chamber of Commerce will be having their after-hours mixer at the Provident Real Estate Venue on, um, from five thirty PM to seven PM. One event that I am especially excited for, and I'm bummed that he, um, headed out a little earlier because I was gonna share this excitement with him, um, with Don Pettinger, we, we are working together and planning the Community Fruit Tree Project groundbreaking ceremony, um, which we are very excited about and we are very much looking forward to. It will be held on Monday, January twenty-second, from eight thirty AM to nine thirty AM at the Eastville Fire Station twenty-seven, so we welcome everyone to come on out, um, and celebrate with us in this historical moment for the city. Um, details will be sent out tomorrow, so keep an eye out for those. On January twenty-fourth, the Eastville STEM Academy, along with River Heights Intermediate and Ramirez Intermediate Schools, will be hosting the Eastville Science and Engineering Fair Expo at the Eastville Community Center on Wednesday. Um, oh, I told you, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, so now you're doubly prepared for that date, and that will be from four PM to seven PM. Lastly, the, um, Eleanor Roosevelt High School Mustangs baseball teams will be hosting a goodwill fundraiser, um, for their teams on January twenty-eighth at Eleanor Roosevelt High School in the North Parking Lot, uh, from nine AM to twelve in the afternoon. That is all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on that? Any other reports? Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
We are going to move to Council Communications, and this is what you were asking about earlier, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to, just real quick, just a quick update on RTA, though. Uh, you know, we're going, we actually have our team now meeting tomorrow at Norco City Hall, and then next Thursday, we will be having our, back in the year, going to have our normal RTA board meeting. Uh, yeah, there's one item I, I wanted to discuss, and I was trying to keep it short, but I do, uh, Ms. Bryant, I probably need some direction on this. Uh, the last city council we had, we were discussing the ten patrol hours and the, adding the additional motor officer. I think cause of time constraint, it was a loaded agenda, uh, item. I, I don't feel in any room, in any condition that we actually had enough time to talk about this, and we were kinda stressing, strapped for within five, ten minutes, and I wanna put this back on the table for discussion. Uh, I don't know if there's a way where we can separate, I know the motion was in one motion to have the ten patrol hours and the motor officer. I'd like to see that in two separate motions, to look at that and, and revisit that, um, that discussion that's possible, and I don't know how we can do that. I think that's why I'm asking to get that direction and to look at that, to kinda put that on table for a discussion. The more talking about, and the reason is, we're talking about something that we're spending quite a bit of money on, um, just with the time allows, I don't think there was even enough for enough discussion or questions. Uh, more information that could have been up to the, you know, that, it could have been more shared to the public, uh, that was there. So I'd like to see that happen, or how that, maybe get some direction.
If you, okay, if you could provide clarification?
I hope so. Um, according to the council rules of decorum and procedures, um, it provides that any council member who voted with the majority may move for a reconsideration of any action at the same or next meeting. Um, since that was at the last meeting, a council member who voted with the majority can bring a motion to have that reconsidered, and that would go on the next, um, agenda if approved.
Okay, so that's what I'd do is basically to reconsider, basically kind of, I don't know if you'd say withdraw my vote, but to reconsider, put that for a motion to table that to the next, for the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, if, if I, I, that is a first. I, I will, and, and I appreciate that, and, uh, that, that you are bringing that forward. I would like to say, however, that this was not as if it was something new that was being brought before the council. Um, we, we had had it at a previous council meeting to that, and then we postponed it. Um, I, I would be more than happy to vote again for more police officers to come into town, um, but I, I just wanna make, it wasn't as if this came out of the blue unexpectedly.
It didn't, but the opportunity to go into the details that now it's being brought up, this is what, cause what we were looking at wasn't necessarily, there was a lot of ideas being thrown out there. In the case that this is what we're looking for, ten patrol, and again, I'm, to make it clear, I'm for the patrolling, I want that. I think the motor officer is where I think there could be a lot of discussion, or, and maybe the need or the not there, and hey, if we, it's not that I'm against it, what I say is, we need to, I think, have more of a valid discussion, and I think we were just pressed for time. There was more questions I probably could have been asked. There was information that, that probably could be more, that could be shared to the public, and, and, so I, I would disagree in the sense that, yes, we are been, we've been looking to increase hours, we want to increase hours, I get that, we want that, and if there's a way to separate that out, that vote, just to only talk about the motor officer, cause that's more my intention, not the ten hours. I don't know if that's possible, cause it was in one motion, both. Uh, you know, that, if I can clarify, that's what I actually would be wanting to discuss is that aspect of it. I don't know if I have that option to do that. Um, but yeah, I, I just don't feel like the, that timing, that situation, when we knew what we were talking about, it was very little time.
To answer that question, if it was just the one motion, then if you wanted to bring it back for reconsideration at the next meeting, the whole motion would be brought back, but you could then direct, um, staff or someone to focus on a certain amount of, uh, certain area of discussion.
Then that would be my reconsideration to, to take a look at that.
Second. Okay, so we have a first and we have a second. Mr., uh, any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing that, Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
I have a question on this before, sorry. Um, am I able to vote on this? I just don't know, because if it's a majority that, that voted in favor of it, or is this just a new motion? You know what I mean?
I thought perhaps that you were declaring a conflict or something. Um, no, this is, um, you could vote on this, because the only restriction is the council member that voted with the majority has to be the one to bring the motion.
Okay.
Just for clarification purposes in the future, if this were to happen, the second, does it also have to come from the voting majority, or?
The, uh, rules are not clear on that.
Okay. Interesting. Okay.
And to clarify, again, it's not that I'm against or for, I just wanna have a more further discussion on the details of that motor officer versus other opportunities, other, you know, uh, law enforcement we could do.
Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Yes.
Mayor Lorimar?
Yeah.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Okay, um, do you have any reports? Any reports from your committees? I do not. Okay, I, I did have a couple. Um, we were, it was a long meeting, last meeting, so postponed, putting them off. Thank you all for the reports and the hard work that you do regularly, uh, in town. On Monday, there was, uh, League of Cities, the California League of Cities, Riverside Division had a meeting took place out in the desert. Councilman, Mayor Protem Rigby was there, and glad you're able- Um, Councilman, Mayor Protem Rigby was there and glad you're able to make it out. Same with our, uh, city manager, Michelle Nissen. Um, it was a, it was a good gathering, a large gathering. Uh, this is a meeting that takes place every two months or, and, uh, this time it's on the east side of the county. You should, so it goes back and forth. Um, it was a good meeting. Um, we were able to discuss what had taken place recently. Um, I, I was able to discuss there what had taken place recently at a California League of Cities State Board meeting, which I had participated in, um, at the end of October, early November up north. And at that meeting, we had discussed the plans for the coming year that the League of Cities would be taking, um, the strategic goals that were gonna be taking place. You guys can check that out on the California League of Cities website, encourage you to do so. Um, I don't wanna take up too much time and go into the nitty gritty on that. Um, also earlier this week, uh, I attended an RCA meeting and that's the Conservation Agency for Western Riverside County. Um, and at that meeting, we voted on purchase of new properties for mitigation against development in the county to protect our environment, um, and endangered species. One of the species that they talked about, they do this every month, uh, was actually a flower, an endangered flower. And, uh, no, no joke, uh, I'm gonna give you guys this name. It is the Mariposa Lilies. And, uh, they, they come in, yeah, butterfly, exactly, look at that, Spanish kicking in. Uh, they come in three varieties and they usually follow after a fire. Um, so they, you can find them in the, uh, Santa Rosa Plateau area as well, right? They are, a- actually, I've seen them, I recognize one from a hike up there. Uh, they come in purple and different colors and they have little hairs on them. Anyway, uh, it was a great meeting and, um, SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, um, we will be having a executive, uh, administrative committee meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna be taking place in that by teleconference out of Riverside tomorrow. And, um, the Legislative Communications and Membership Committee, which I also sit on, is going to be taking place next week on Wednesday. Um, and I will be doing that from the LA offices of SCAG. So, that concludes my report. Uh, anybody else? Okay. That concludes our meeting. Uh, the next meet, so we have reached adjournment. Um, the next meeting of the Eastville City Council will take place on January twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, at six-thirty PM here in this room. This meeting is now adjourned.